All right, good evening. Welcome to a special work session. We don't usually meet on Thursday nights, but because of timing and the business we need to decide on, we have a special work session on this Thursday night. We have two agenda items. If we do not get to the second one, that's okay. The first one may take our entire time. I promise you to be watching the clock and we'll be done one way or another at seven thirty. Those of you around the table, I'm asking to make sure when you're talking, you get the mic up close to you. Nathan has done, I can already tell a huge difference in here today with the sound. Nathan, thank you. That's as awesome within this. So with that, hi Terry, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Good. Tonight, here's what our goal is. At the next board meeting on Monday night, the packet has gone out. It's been advertised to the public. You're going to see the timelines. We're going to be voting on the timelines for the 2025 bond. You don't, you're not necessarily that night going to be approving a project. However, before we go into the hearings, we have to have the project sorted out. So there's not a decision that needs to be made Monday, but we need to be going a direction. So when Terry and I are working on this for all the proper documentation and paperwork, we're honoring your wishes as a board. And so Terry, with that, we'll turn it over to you and you're going to walk us through some of the details and then I'll try to lead a discussion here then.
Okay, thank you, John. I appreciate it. So school board, I'm going to present the same presentation that I showed you back on the eleventh. I gave you the Cliff Notes twenty minute version. This is the hour version. Going to get into more detail and feel free to ask me questions along the way. So what I'm going to present again is three options, option A, B, C, and then some alternate options. So those alternate options could take the place of things in A, B, and C or plug in there in addition to. Just depends on how the numbers work out because it's a math problem based on what we had talked about at the, at the meeting, school board meeting of a general obligation bond of about six point six, which would give us about six million in construction money. So that's the way that I'm looking at it. So option A would be a new maintenance building, IT building, transportation building. That's the former RMC building out by the reservoir. Option B would be high school library renovation into a learning commons as well as high school window replacement. Option C would be the same, the library renovation to learning commons, secure vestibules at a few buildings and then Salomonity School pool demolition to remove that portion of the building and right size it a little bit. And then the alternative options would be high school arena ceiling repaint, horseman HVAC replacement, reseal the windows, doors at the triplets and then clean seal the masonry and caulk the joints at the triplets, Crestview and Riverview. All right, so getting started with option A, so a new maintenance building, IT building, transportation building. That's what's there now and a lot of storage on top of that. So ballpark cost for this is about six million. So it's pretty much the only project, if we decided to go down this road, that we could get done with the Geo bond. So to give you a little history on the existing building, it was built nineteen sixty-five was the RMC building, like I said. And then in two thousand and one, there's a pole barn building that's storage that's adjacent to it. So overall, those two buildings combines about twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. It's on about seven point six five acres, asphalt paving and parking and gravel parking. So it's obviously the folks that work there and then bus parking is the majority of it. The building houses offices, IT, maintenance, garage, shops, equipment, and like I said, material storage. So the height of the building was not built with the intent of having buses on lifts to get them up off the floor very high. There is a lift in there, but it's, there's just not enough room to go up very high with it. And when I was out there getting these pictures for the presentation, they were just using creepers on the floor to access the underside of the bus. So there, there's a lot of hazardous material that's, that's stored out there, obviously for the maintenance of vehicles and buses. And there's really no containment systems in place for that and it's, it's just what's been done for years. There are a lot of unsafe, non-code compliant issues with the storage and the stairs and the railing. And the restrooms are not even remotely close to being ADA accessible. And so that's just something that would have to be remedied with a new building. So this is an aerial of the property on the north side is the, the primary building. And then the pole barns just to the north there, a little bit of parking. And then the second parcel to the south, so there are two parcels there total, is the, the bus parking. And then you're budding up to reservoir property and obviously State Road five. I talked to the county about the property because it's zoned agricultural and it, it never got a special use variance to be used for what it is today. There's no record that it was ever done. It was just allowed. You guys took over the building and it became what it is. So since the paperwork was never filed and none of that was ever done, we would have to do that now with a new building. And we would also need to deal with the airport authority to get approval from them as well, since they're the adjacent neighbor. And basically right where you see the bus parking, that's right in line with the runway. So the airport's going to have height restrictions on the building, but it shouldn't affect what we need just to get the building a little taller than what's there to allow for buses. And so the idea that I had is to build a new building and it could be built to the north of the existing building potentially, while you keep the existing main building in play and use it. Or you build the new building to the south where the bus parking is. The only issue that creates a little bit is where you're going to put those buses while you're building that new building. So just something that would have to be figured out. Based on the complexity of this project, it's going to, it would take a little longer to get through the design process and then the approval process and everything else because it is a complete new building and demolition. So it's not, it's not something that we can do as fast as like we do in here in high school where it's just renovation. So some pictures of the existing building. This is the front of it from State Road five. And I mentioned in the meeting last time that my pictures do not do this justice. My pictures will make it look really nice and it's, it's not so nice. But I brighten up all the pictures so that you can see them and in the process it does make them look better. So there's, there's the lift that I mentioned, but you can see how close the lights, the heating, everything else. It's, it's, the bus is not going up very high if, if you do put it on the lift. The restroom and Rich had told me about this, how they, if you use that urinal on the, on the, on the left, yeah, to kind of straddle the heater. And he said, he said that's kind of a running joke, how they deal with it. This is the storage loft. You can see the buses there in the background. This is a storage loft. There's, there's a lot less stuff than used to be up there back when we started in twenty-one and twenty-two. There was a lot, a lot, a lot of stuff up there, a lot of stuff I recognized from when I was in school. So they cleaned a lot of that out, but it's hard to tell in the picture on the right. There's some really good cobwebs going on there. So it could serve as a haunted house as well. But the railing, if you look at that railing, it's literally like knee height. And there's no, no toe kick or anything. So you could easily have a part fall off. The stairs are too wide. The railing's not tall enough. There's no handrails per code. This is around the corner of that same storage area. As you can see, that's, the railing is just two by fours. It's pretty simple. And then this gets into the storage of the hazardous material and, and how it's stored. And you can just see it's five gallon buckets of stuff and just, it just kind of gets put wherever. It's not horrible, but it's also not the safest environment to be in if you, if you have a spill or have any incident. And then the shops are out there too. So the shops were a lot cleaner than the maintenance area, but the, the shops area where you've got woodworking shop and other things, not bad. They seem to have quite a bit of room, which is good to do their job. And then the exterior of the building, it just has a lot of wear and tear from its age from nineteen sixty-five, a lot of rust. The way it's designed as well, the steel structure of the building penetrates through the exterior wall. So to heat and cool that building, it has to cost a small fortune or they just are not very comfortable when, when they're in there. So this was, it's can't, it's hard to see on that picture on the right, but that's the gas meter for the building incoming gas meter. And there's no protection around that. There should be bollards there so that somebody with a vehicle, which is parked right in front of it, wouldn't run into it. And you can see right next to it on the right, a vehicle has hit the building because it's completely caved in a couple of feet right there. So and then the picture on the left shows the bar, the pole, pole barn building. And you've got fuel storage there again with no containment. There's nothing in place for that. And then inside that building and Rich and I were just talking about it, he was here just a little bit ago and we were talking about, as you can see, the stairs for the storage loft in that pole barn, there's zero railing. So carrying things has to be a lot of fun up and down the stairs without any way to catch yourself if you lose your balance. So, so a lot of things that need to be remedied with a new building to improve what's going on out there. And, and likely because of what it is, this isn't students, it isn't staff, it isn't teachers. It's, but these guys keep everything going. These guys keep everything alive. And it's important that they have nice space and they've, they've been neglected a little bit, I think, over the years. And, but they're fine with it. Rich is like, I'm good. I don't care. But that's the mentality that they have. And it's great, but it definitely could use some, some improvements. So, so a new, a new building would include again, the same spaces, maintenance, staff, office, meeting spaces, IT staff offices and meeting spaces, new bus bays with lift capabilities, new fuel and oil storage and containment, new storage space, new shop areas and offices and improve HVAC and ventilation, improve parking areas and improve site drainage. The way the building sits and the site, there's literally water that runs to the overhead doors and can get into the overhead doors in a heavy downpour. So it's, it's just the way it was built years ago and it, it is a challenging issue to deal with. So.
Terry, Terry, are you imagining this being the same square footage as the current one, bigger, smaller, just different design?
When we'd get into design, we would find out between that pole barn and what I see stored in the loft and all that, what, what do you really need? There used to be more, a lot more stuff up there and what I saw in a lot of places is still just old stuff. And so in the process of design, we would find out, what do you, what do you really need? And is there a better way to store things than what you're doing so that we can consolidate? I based my six million dollars off of a building of similar square footage. But if we make a taller building, we could actually create storage loft space that is accessible and is safe and do it better. And even possibly put in like a dumb waiter types lift so they could move things up and down so that the building doesn't have to take up necessarily more footprint than what's already there or even maybe less.
Would it be having that extra room, you could build, you could have, be done construction and still do business out of the old one without issue?
I, I believe there would not be an issue to continue to do. I think there's enough room there to make it work. It's just the logistics of the buses potentially to the south. And also in the process and talking to the county, we would combine both of those parcels because we can't build across that lot line. So we would combine all that together into one big parcel at the same time. So.
So I'm not a fan of putting that building right in the end of a runway. So I would love to see or hear conversations to the north, maybe get rid of that pole barn a little bit, see if they can do without it. Maybe they'd also find out that they don't need the stuff that's in there and they could start, start the process of, of sorting.
Right.
To begin with. That would make more sense to me. The other question I have, and this may be getting into a larger topic. What I heard you say is it's going to take some more time. It will. So does it?
And this is a question now for John. What I heard from Ice Miller in that riveting conversation, because I know everyone was on their, the seat of their chairs, because I was, I'm assuming everyone else was, that we, we do this Geo bond and then we have the ability to possibly do a larger one than the year after. Do we have an idea of what that is? Because the reason I asked that question is that may color some of my decision and thought processes going into this Geo bond.
Yes. The absolute answer to your question is yes. Today Terry sent to us a document, which was his presentation at the last meeting with our new AV in it. And Becky is going to talk to this a little bit, Mrs. Smith, on Monday night so that we just have a better understanding of your question about timing and what it means. My recommendation to all of you is going to do, is do the, the payment to pay it off in five years because of how the law's written. It affords us then future boards, administration options where if we go with a two-year, then we get into.
Complications.
Yes, within that. Now, the timing of this is really important because if we have a direction from you within the next week, maybe even tonight, you know, we can't vote on anything, but we have an idea. I think we get busy pretty quick. And then, you know, one thing I've not talked to Terry about, which is where you're driving your question is, what's the completion look like on something like this if this is your decision? So how long, I think that's really kind of also what you're asking is how long would the process take? You know, but I'm, to answer your question, it depends if we go to the two or the five year.
Oh, and then I got a question about that too.
Payout, but that's why I've already started talking to Mrs. Smith. I think we need to have a conversation about that. And now that you have the AV, you know specifically, but I'm not concerned about completion here. New bond leases in the future. I think the timing of all that's going to work very well.
Yeah. And, and as I sit in conversation is too, is what I don't like about the five year.
I know.
Is the cost.
Absolutely.
But the law says we have to have a five year, we have to do five year to be able to do that. But is there a penalty if we pay it off early?
Let's say that again.
Is there a penalty if we pay it early? I don't, you don't have to answer that. It's just, think about it.
Yeah, I, I would be really hesitant of that just because of the way the law is written. I know it was riveting conversation last Monday night and you had to weed through a lot of information, but it behooves us to pay that off in five years for future flexibility for future projects.
I don't like that answer, but.
Rather than pay it early?
Rather than pay it early. So I don't care. So I don't care what project here or projects you pick, it's gonna be the same, it's gonna be the same conversation.
But just to reiterate, we probably will continue this conversation after we get this geo bond figured out. What will then start that conversation for that next larger project, is what I would hear.
My goal would be in the winter of twenty six, is for us now that we, that we have made these decisions. We've gone through the process, now to jump right into your questions, what's next? What's our timeframe? How long out are we talking? Um, you're gonna have some major decisions as a board to determine. Okay, if you listen to Terry, he gave you, you know, projected what you're gonna have available to you over the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. Well, you obviously don't want to spend all of that in one chunk. So again, this is where we work with Terry on spreading this out to make sure that we're doing it the right way, so.
You mean Tyler?
Who'd I say?
Terry.
Well.
Two Ts, I, I thought I knew who you were talking about, I just wanted to make sure.
Tyler, Tyler from Baker Tilly, yeah, okay, I hope I'm answering your question.
You are, and it's probably leading to more questions, but I think for right now, I wanna have Terry continue.
Yes.
So, so Ryan, it's a good question on timing, so I, what, by taking longer. Um, what I mean by that is the process of getting approvals from the county, the airport authority, that obviously is gonna add. It can add a month or two, based on schedule and timing on their part, we would still be designing the whole time. But design wise for us, it would probably take six to seven months just to get through the design and approval process. But what's nice about this project is it doesn't have to be a summer project like the high school or one of the other schools, it can be done whenever. Um, and we can work around if we're gonna build the new building adjacent to the existing. Um, construction wise, this, a building like this would probably take about nine months. Um, as long as everything went well, and then demo the old building, clear the site, get everything cleaned up. So overall, you're looking at a year and a half project, probably from beginning to end, um to get through this one. Um, as long as we start and don't have any hiccups and don't have any issues um in getting through the process. The other thing we don't know yet is obviously soil conditions, things like that out there. I don't know what the site was used for previously, if it was just farm field or a dump site, or who knows, so we've, we've seen a little bit of everything over the years, so. Uh, hopefully it's just farm field and, and we'll have good soil, soils and good capacity, so. This is an example of a, a school system locally that um did a really big pre-engineered, so big steel building. That's the most economical building for this type of project, um and there's different ways you can heat it and cool it and ventilation and everything else, so. Um, but it, it's, it was a pretty nice example, and we, like I said in the meeting, we would go visit some, some buildings. And see some newer bus buildings, just to see how they did things and see what we like, what we don't like, and, and work off of that, so. Any other questions regarding that option A?
On that, just an FYI for, for you on the combining those parcels, it's about a five dollar fee at the auditor's office, it takes about ten minutes. The um, the stormwater review, I do the stormwater review for the county. So um, I don't know if that.
Can you make them, I, I can't barely hear you.
The stormwater review for the county, it, that's me. Um, there's pretty simple standards on what we ask for, uh it's not hard. Um, and the biggest thing that I look for is the release rates on what we're going to do. Uh, my other questions with this would be on the, that building that's there. How many buses typically are they working on at a time, or?
When I was there, there were, I think there were three in there, in that picture, um, well, there's two. Um, but there also could be a bus or a truck or a.
It, my, my next question would be is how many autumn, I mean, like, we have buses, how many buses do we have total?
Uh, active, uh, I'm gonna say, don't hold me to it, I think eighty one uh buses um in some manner. You know, that is include the small white buses and so.
How many vehicles do we have as pickups and cars and that stuff, and, and do they do all the work on those as well?
Yes, sir.
So my question on this would be, since, since this building is short, would we be able to salvage this building for the automotive portion of it? And only build something for the buses and revamp this and save quite a bit of money?
Um, possibly, I don't know what value, this building's in really bad shape. Um, is not insulated, is, the way it's heated, cooled and ventilation, you take it down to its shell, you, there's not a lot of value left. It is a pre-engineered box, um, that has a tremendous amount of wear and tear and age on it. Um, so it's, it's, that would be an option, it, but trying to save that and work around it could be challenging. Because of the site, and, and I didn't get pictures in here of the drainage, the drainage is, is, is pretty tricky.
And if, if you were taking out, say, the, the pole barn and stuff, we, I mean, I think it'd be pretty easy to, to lower the, the ground elevations. And drop the, the pavement in front of it and give it positive drainage away from the building, but that, I, I'm just asking.
Right, and add some site drainage that doesn't exist.
Right.
Right, I don't know where it goes to now, but um, there's, there's quite a, there's quite a few structures out there, but um. Rich told me it's pretty challenging when it's a heavy downpour of, of how they deal with the water.
Right.
And the runoff, so, yeah, all, we would look, start from a fresh look and also have to deal with um stormwater today. And the co- code requirements and the regulations are different than when this was built, so we're probably gonna have underground storage somewhere to deal with all the hard surface.
There you go.
Yeah, you don't think so?
Nope.
Well, it depends on how we redo the site, and do you guys count gravel as fifty percent or a hundred percent?
It typically is eighty percent.
Eighty?
And then, yeah.
So we just didn't get to do the math, and also there's a little bit more room there, um and do we spread the buses out more, do we, I don't know. There's a lot we have to get into, but uh be handy to um have you as part of the team to, to work through some of that, because you'd tell us what we need to look at upfront.
Yeah.
So, okay.
So another question on that, that area.
Yeah.
Having recently seen a school corporation having to cancel school for a day because their buses were vandalized. Do we also need to, in that concept, I know it's not in your numbers, but is it something that we need to consider, is adding additional security for our buses while we're out there?
No question, that's been one of the leading conversations that Terry and I and Chuck have been having. Is that we can't do this and not, and not address the security related issues, and I mean, that's on all fronts. So that's including cameras, that's including fencing, um, that has to be part of this, of this project. If, if we decide to go this direction.
Probably also electrical for winter to heat the, keep the engine blocks going on them as well, or is there's that already there?
It's there.
Is it there?
It's, it's there, barely, but it's there.
It's kind of an old school method, but it's there.
It's there, right, yeah, I didn't take pictures of everything, but um, okay, um, I'll move on to option B. So option B would be high school library renovation uh into a le- uh learning commons, and then the high school window replacements. So existing condition, library was originally designed, and a lot of you went to school here. Some of us are old enough to know what it looked like originally, and then others only know it as it kind of looks today, so uh with the, the walls that go up to the ceiling. Um, so originally it was made to be able to see through the space and all, and get a lot of natural daylight in there from the, for uh courtyards. That's not how it is today, it's, it's a box, and it's, it's not real inviting to be in there, it works well for testing and other things because you um are pretty isolated. But um, it's just not a very inviting space, so we would definitely want to dress that up, it is a little over twelve thousand square feet. So it's larger than the science block project that we did a couple of years ago. Um, and as far as the exterior windows on the building itself, the high school. At the, some of the windows are right behind you, they're single pane glass, um, really no security, no safety. There is window tint on most of these windows or film that's been added over the years. Um, so we would want to uh make some changes to this and add some security, which I'll talk about here in a second. So there's a couple of pictures inside, the ceiling system, um, it's changes in there. Because if you go in there now and where that training room is that's off to the right, when you come in from the science block side of the building. Um, that, that box of rooms used to be in the middle, and you used to be able to walk around the library. And you can't anymore because that was all shifted over, and so you can see it in the ceiling, if you go in there and look, you'll see where the ceiling changes. And you can kind of tell where things used to be, um, there's still a lot of stacks, a lot of books. Um, and in talking to the librarian, she knows that she would want to reduce and consolidate and um, and improve things. And make it more of a modern space. Um, also, over time, the building was originally not designed to have IT, because it didn't exist in nineteen seventy, except for coax wire. So this got added, there is uh an IT rack in there, and there is cooling within that IT rack. Um, but I mentioned at the meeting, the ceiling planum is still wide open, so all of that cold air that's dumping in there. It ends up just going into the ceiling and, and uh gets spread out in the building. Um, so we want to create a real IT room that's isolated and controlled much better than um, than what's there today. But we also don't want to move this, it would be very expensive and very tedious and very difficult and challenging to move that. Because you can't stretch IT cabling, it doesn't, you can't stretch it to move stuff around, so. Um, so we would not want to do that, we just want to clean it up and make it better, so. So, uh, and also there, were restrooms in there as well, which are no longer there, so we would want to bring back restroom. Um, space and, and that way, if you've got something going on there, a student doesn't necessarily have to leave the library to go out into the building. They could just use the restroom within that space, so, uh, a new modern library, um, and again. Uh, cost wise, we're looking at around four million, but um, that could change depending on. Everything that we add to it, the level of finishes and how far we go with things, I just ballparked it right now at about four million. It would be, include library, learning, um, study space, meeting space, maker lab and digital exploration space. Um, multiple rooms with specialized learning, open space and soft seating for large group gathering and teaching. Various meeting space uh types with flexibility and diversity, consolidated book stack storage, digital integration throughout all spaces. With, for modern teaching and learning, and then glass walls uh with some privacy to allow natural daylight and more of an open feel like it once had. These are images I shared with you last time, these uh came through uh the librarian, she works with a furniture company. And this was just some of the concepts and ideas that they were throwing around in the process of helping ballpark costs. Um, because this would be a soft cost item uh for the space to have all of this furniture uh put in there. Some of the maker space and lab spaces that would be uh internal to the space. This is an idea of meeting room spaces where you have open concept where you can see through it, but you have digital capabilities. Um, but this is what you would see in a higher ed and also in the corporate world these days, this is a lot of. This is when I go to meetings, this is what a lot of it looks like, so we want high school students to, to be exposed to this earlier rather than later. And right now, they don't have these opportunities for, for spaces like this, and this even takes it even further where you do pods. Uh, or the concept in the images shows uh booth type meeting spaces as well. But this would be more of a sound proof option where you could have learning pods or um meeting pods like these, and these can actually be moved around. They just plug and play, um, so it's pretty simple how these work. Uh, consolidated book storage, this is a way to do it to where you don't have books spread throughout the entire space. And instead it could be uh in the middle or in a corner or out of the way, uh but still accessible for students. Ideas of like bright colors, fun space, soft seating, um, and um. Being at University of Cincinnati yesterday, dropping my youngest son off for college for the first time for him, this is exactly what we walked through. This is what his dorm looked like this, he's, he's in a fourteen story dorm, and it, this is what you see. Uh, it's brand new, it was pretty impressive and, and fun and amazing, and he was excited, he was ready for me to leave, so. See ya, so, uh, so I'm glad he's uh gonna enjoy it and have fun, but this is what we want to bring here. So when students transition up to the higher ed level, they, they've already been exposed to it to some extent. Um, this is their concept for using clear glass, but adding some level of privacy, you can integrate graphics and design into it. Much like we did the mural wall, we could do something similar here, but do it on, on the glass. Um, and a lot of this is just big stickers and decals that's put over the glass, so it's an inexpensive way to accomplish what we want to. Um, so that is um a nutshell version. There's a lot more going into the, to the library, into a learning commons, because we'd want a lot of involvement from different groups about what do you want? Um, and this would be a central space, obviously it'd be the um diamond in the rough of the building. But it gives every department, every teacher, everybody access to a modern, fun, exciting space. Um, I mean, the planetarium, if, for those of us that have been in there and see how cool that little tiny space is, and I imagine that in twelve thousand square feet of. That kind of excitement in the building, um, and that's what our intent would be for this.
What, um, um, I'm sorry, I got a couple of questions, uh, so obviously disruption uh for school. Um, how long, a couple of years? Um, I can just see it's a big enough space and it, it uses, and it's, I know it's used still despite its age. Um, and maybe Dr. Daggots, I'm gonna probably drag you into this too, but um, um, what do you think?
I would anticipate we would phase it like we did the science, so either in halves. Because sciences was ten thousand, so this is a little bigger, um, but this is actually a little easier than science. And that it's not all that casework and all the, it's, that space was heavy plumbing and mechanical and a lot. This is not, it's a little different, but I think we would end up phasing it, so that potentially you could use half of the old. While you're renovating half of the new and then flip it and be able to open it up, it'd probably be a two summer project.
Um, another question, again, probably for the librarian or Dr. Daggots or some of your staff, but. Over the last decade or so, maybe longer, I've been to several high schools, in particular through show choir competitions. Uh, athletic competitions, whatever it might be, uh, a lot of places in, it's, it's brought, brought up here to me since on my position. Um, if we ever renovated the library, is there any consideration of a smaller like auditorium? Lecture hall, um, whatever you want to call it, I don't, I don't know, there, a lot of schools have a smaller. Meeting area that is, that can be used as a lecture hall, um, now maybe it's not something that's necessarily a thing anymore. Because you're trying to get smaller class sizes, and I understand that, um, but uh just, if it was going to be done, I think that's the only space that it could even be considered. Um, and if it's not, then that's fine, but like I said, more than a few people have mentioned that. Usually when they're walking with me through a high school, it's not ours, they said, something like that would be really cool, and I went to North. Uh, so I'm just talking out loud.
That's, Tim, that's a great point, um, what we could look at is um, to be able to design. Uh, classroom or lab spaces that potentially could have uh folding partition walls, so the, you could open it up to a larger space. We're still limited to this ceiling height, so no matter what we do, we're limited to this ceiling height. And so, much like this space, it's hard to make it feel grandiose when you've got such a.
And, and that's a great point, because I, I know that none of us considered that, no one did when it was mentioned. Um, but again, it was, it was something that's been on, on my mind, and I, I wondered, so. Um, we talked about the, the furniture, and I know that's a major investment. And as opposed to furnishing a classroom or a cafeteria, commons is going to be seen. Um, and it's gonna be used, that stuff wear decently, I mean, I know you invest a lot, so.
Right, um, it, it's all about the price, quality and, and, and. In a space like this, we would actually get uh samples of a lot of parts and pieces and kick the tires on it. And um, and literally try to put some wear and tear on it, see what happens. A lot of times you have to lean on the vendors and, and have them be honest, or ask them, where can I go see it, where can I go see it's been in place for two years? And go see what kind of condition it's in, um, because I've seen everything. Um, and um, college students uh can be a little rough, high school students are a lot more rough. I mean, I've seen some of the most abuse in high schools that I've ever seen, and I've walked in, I've done presentations in classrooms, and there's a room full of. Chairs for students to sit in, and not one student is sitting in a chair, they're sitting on tables like this, and I'm like, that's not made for five kids to sit on. But it's all about how uh you use the space, how you take care of the space. A lot of the chairs that are in there today are the chairs I sat in, you guys sat in, maybe John sat, I don't know if, uh, the, the mall chair, I mean. They've lasted forever, um, so it's about, you're gonna pay for a good quality upfront. And so we'd have to make sure that we, we get what we want and invest wisely, so.
So Tim took my audit, my little small presentation space idea already.
Second question I had for you is, I believe the TV station is still over in that area too, in the corner. How does that figure factor in? And there's a TV classroom there.
Yes, um, we would try to integrate as many things in here as we can until we run out of room. The other issue is going to be how much open space do we want for testing and other things? Or do we do that to where, like I said, you open up smaller rooms into a larger room so that you can still have testing, but have other things going on outside there?
I think the the video, the TV's now been moved on by the radio room, I believe.
Yeah, I think what's important to keep in mind here too is this, where we decide we're going is great. But where where we're going next is also going to be determined here over the next few months, you know, that within the next year too. Because what you don't, what we don't ultimately pick from here is going to be, you know, a future project sooner than later. Um, if you went this route and you said, John, we're gonna go this way, that's great. But we can't, we can't kick that transportation building down the road forever. But if you said we're going to the transportation building next, it would be hard not to put this one up near the front. Of the next series of projects we're doing. And so um, I know depending upon whether this one falls into place. It would be hard for me as a superintendent, if we were doing a lease, to say, hey, let's not forget why we're doing this. That we go down into Nick Altman's two rooms and address that why we're doing this. Because there, we could really be benefiting children there too with many of the things that's going to go on in here. And so um, that's what these, that's why these decisions are so difficult to make. Is because of of it, it impacts us in so many different ways, so.
It's a good point. The the radio station still looks the same, so. I don't think they're spinning records anymore, but I think it's still looks the same.
The board did get updated.
All right. Uh, the next part of this option B would be the windows and like I mentioned. So the windows are the windows out front, same windows behind you. And then we have windows at two door locations and then the athletic hallway. Um, all very similar in how it's constructed. The main issue that we have is it's single pane glass, so we have minimal to no R value there, so heating and cooling just goes right through that. Um, and the other big, big component is there's no safety whatsoever. So you get a rock big enough, you can throw it through that window and access the building. Um, so the idea would be for all of this glass, and that's why it's two million dollars. To replace all the glass with insulated glass and um tinted glass. So we're gonna have, the tint would not be a window film like you see there where it's peeled off. It would be in the glass itself as part of it. So you would no longer have film and a mismatch of uh window tint and colors and things. Um, these are the two door locations at door ten and door thirty-five, so again, it's a lot. Um, but what we would add is insulated, one inch insulated glass and then add the three M ballistic film to that. We've done this a lot for uh federal installations and they use it. And then Rich had the opportunity a few years ago to go and swing a baseball bat and and try to break through it. And they said they could not. None of them could break through the glass, so it does work. It does add some cost, but it adds that layer of safety that this building does not have at all. And it's uh, it's a lot. It's a lot when it comes to how much is exposed in the building, so. Any questions on that one?
Um, does it, does it make any sense at all? I mean, we have a lot of glass. Does it make any sense to have floor to ceiling glass everywhere and make them smaller somehow? Or or is that even something that would just exponentially increase the cost?
It wouldn't, so you could add a spandrel panel, as it's called, an insulated spandrel panel. That wouldn't be glass. So it would be metal panel on the outside and inside. That's a way to do it. Uh, another option would be to build an actual stud wall and that would add cost, but. We, we, there's ways we could do it if you wanted to minimize that. Um, minimizing the natural daylight and the views and usually people don't want to go in that direction.
Sure.
But um, this building's unique in that it has so much open floor to ceiling glass like this. Uh, which is great, but also is a huge safety concern, so.
Right.
But yeah, there's different ways to look at it and then decide which direction is best.
So to Terry, just for the sake of time, if we could cover these next two in the next fifteen minutes to allow them about a half hour to have some discussion here. I think that would be agreeable to everybody. That that would be great, so thank you.
The rest of them get a little more boring, so. Uh, option C, again, the library, which we're not going to cover again, but then now we're going to add secure vestibules at the triplets in Salomone. And then the pool demo, pool demolition, which some of you have seen before because we had already designed it as part of the HVAC uh replacement project there. So we already talked about the library and everything that's included there. Um, the triplets and when it comes to uh secure entry vestibules, I covered this in the meeting. But that's one of the triplets and they're all exactly the same. You have main doors that walk into the building and you have full reign of the entire building after you walk through those doors. Uh, the lo, the office is off to the right of that picture on the left and the right of the picture on the right. Um, so you're coming in right at the office, but you come in and then walk around and go into that door. The idea would be to add a wall at this location, um, take one of the windows out of the office and put a door in that vestibule. So that you would have a secure vestibule. They could no longer get into the building, but they could instead get into the office if you allow access into the office. If they need to then go into the building, they would go through the office and out and not necessarily through the vestibule any longer. So that adds a layer of security. That also helps with HVAC heating cooling costs as well. Because we are now trapping that cold or hot air in that vestibule and not letting it come into the building. Salomone, it's simply adding card access like this building now has uh to the front doors. Um, right now, you get buzzed in, um, but then you can keep going. And so it would be to add a layer at one of the, at the interior vestibule doors. So you let them into the vestibule, but then stop them there and then buzz them in after that, so.
So the trip was similar to concept that what we did at Crestview?
It's yes, it's, yeah, exactly, because that's what Rich had me look at. And we've done this same thing over and over and over for four room community schools in the past. Uh, because buildings weren't designed or weren't built originally with with vestibules. So uh, the pool demo is pretty straightforward and simple. Um, the space is not used. It's not even heated and cooled. Uh, the pool isn't, but the locker room, so you see the red line where it chops off, those are the original locker rooms that serve the pool. Um, there are a couple of restrooms that are still used there today, but barely. And the rest of it pretty much is storage of stuff that can probably go away. Um, so the idea would be to demo that entire thing. And the wall that's now in the hallway would become exterior wall um to the building. And we would put metal siding on it and and make sure it's waterproof and then change the roof uh configuration, make everything work. Um, so pretty straightforward about how that could be done. We already had a, that was an alternate in the HVAC replacement project, so we know where that cost was. And we anticipated it'd be fairly close to the same still. Because and that, that's a pretty quick and easy one because we just pull that out of our drawings, create a new set of drawings from what we already have designed. And put it out to bid.
I thought we were also gonna get rid of those locker rooms at the top. Was that an option or is that an addition? Separate option, okay.
There were six total alternates in that project and we ended up with one alternate and the main project is all we could afford, so.
So what do we do for the sporting events and the restrooms? Because that's when those restrooms are heavily used.
Correct.
And there's only one stall.
Right, this drawing doesn't show it, but there would, so in that hallway that goes um, right there on the bottom of where the gymnasium is. That hallway, we would add a men's and women's restroom in that location. I didn't show it in this, we have it already designed and drawn, but that's.
Would there be any, I mean, like changing those locker rooms into restrooms at all?
Uh, the, uh, up there?
Yes.
Absolutely, they could. They're just, they're not mothballed really. They're just, the one has a store in it. And the others are pretty much just storage and empty, but yeah, that could be a possibility.
So you asking just, are there, are there just no locker rooms then for teams?
I mean, there's.
Which is, which is, okay, I just want to make sure that's clear that there wouldn't be any, any locker rooms for teams. I mean, I don't know that that's necessary anymore, but um.
That's what I've been told. It's not used at all, yeah.
I mean, it's used for the basketball games and.
I've heard nobody really changes, nobody really does a lot, so.
There's not a lot that is correct, but they are, I mean, like, they're used occasionally.
Yeah, the locker rooms to the north could be brought back easier.
Yeah, utilizing those because they're nicer.
They are.
They're in nicer shape and, yeah, somehow changing that into a restroom as well would be. Give you a lot more options.
It would, and that would be very a viable option because this doesn't include taking that off, so. Carrie, that's what I was gonna ask too.
Uh, Mr. Trout, do you know, does Salomone have to budget any money for the pool area? Like anything extra?
Um, when we're, when, when, when Mrs. Smith and I are putting the budgets together, we always take that into account. But there is not a line item per se, but when we are figuring um, two areas. And mainly, when we're looking at some of the line items at Salomone, we we build in a little bit for that. But I'm not going to tell you as a board that it's significant. Um, my personal concern is, is that, and Terry, I'm probably gonna use the wrong words. Is that that pool is pulling away area walls. There's some significant cracking and separation going on in there. Is that, is that fair to say or is that not fair to say?
Um, we didn't see anything structural with it. The biggest issue is um, with that mechanical replacement project that's going on right now. We're abandoning a lot of old stuff because we can't get it out of the building. There's, it was, the building was built around it. So you're just leaving a lot of old stuff that isn't necessary anymore. The building's not utilized as a middle school like it was, you know, so. Um, and you're, but you're spending money to keep the lights on and some heating and some of the space. You're pumping water out of it. There's groundwater coming into that pool all the time. It's being pumped out, so. It's, it's a nuisance. It's an issue, so. Um, any more questions on those two? Okay, so this is the alternate options. These could be combined or switched around with some of the others and and plugged in here. Um, so high school arena ceiling repaint, horseman HVAC. And then resealing windows and masonry at the triplets, uh, and then Crestview and Riverview. Um, the arena ceiling, I showed you guys pictures last time. It looks fine from a distance and then if you s, look at it closely, you start to see where the paint's peeled off of the piping. You see where paint's peeling off of the structure. Uh, it's peeling off the HVAC ductwork. Um, and my guess is, is that the original oil based paint was still up there and then a latex paint was put over it at some point. And that's usually what causes this. It just starts to pull itself apart. Uh, and um, I know Rich takes a lot of pride in the floor and how that space looks. And he, he looks up and he's like, we gotta do something about this, so he's the one who would really like to see this. And um, the space is amazing. You guys have an arena that most schools do not. Um, because um, I know, I, I've been in Homestead's new arena and I don't even know why they call it an arena. So it's a gym compared, you guys have an arena. It's, it's really nice, so. Um, and I know uh, other schools like to come and play in your arena because of what it is, so. Um, so that one's pretty straightforward. It's, the challenging part with that is it is a lot, a lot, a lot of square footage. I think it's about forty thousand square feet, uh, because it goes over the bleachers, it goes everywhere. And and the way to get that paint off is you gotta go in and use some type of media blast uh to get it off. And so it's gonna make a huge mess and um, gonna shut it down. It could be a done in the summer. It's just gonna take a good team and a good crew to get in there and get it done. And then they use a dry fall paint, so that new paint, if even any overspray, it comes down, it dries. It's called dry fall because it dries before it ever hits the floor, and so it's dust at that point, so you don't get overspray on everything, so. Um, horseman HVAC, this one's just due to the age of the equipment and how it's kind of been pieced together over time. Um, and these pictures show how you've got things kind of, you know, you've got some spray foam uh sealing things up. And then on the other side, where you see the dirt on that white ductwork insulation wrap, that's leakage. And so this would be replacing um, small mechanical units throughout the entire building. Not ones too glamorous, but uh would need to be done. And this one is then the masonry and caulk joints at the triplets as well as Crestview and Riverview. And this was just some pictures of, you can see the caulk's completely gone. And at that corner location of a window, that's allowing that water down into that masonry. Which could end up into the building, except rather than going out of the building, so we don't want moisture in the wall, which can create bad things inside the wall. So this is just a maintenance thing that needs done um, to to keep the building safe and healthy. Um, and then as well as just the uh look of some of it where you have um, mold mildew. It's based, the triplets have no to be cleaned up and some of the drainage needs to be dealt with. And then the masonry is just cleaning, uh, that's at Riverview. Uh, Riverview overall, the building's not bad, but since some of these uh, auxiliary walls just need cleaned up. There are some caulk joints that don't have caulk in them, uh, so at some point, some work was done, but caulk wasn't put back. So we want to just take care of the whole building and get it all done at one time, so. I think I have a minute to spare, so.
You're good. Um, let's spend the next just few minutes just um, talking about your general thoughts. About what you saw here, that if you were to say that you're leaning one direction. To point us to a direction, uh, weave that into what you're gonna say to us. And then we can kind of build off of each other's conversations here. Um, and then I'll see where we're kind of at as a group and then hopefully tie us up here toward the end. So we got a half an hour, so um, Tim, you want to start us then?
No, I'm, I was just gonna start honestly with the rest of the board. Mr. Melcher, because I got plenty to say, but they're not gonna get a chance.
Okay, so. This is my thoughts. So safety and security. I, I gotta go with the secure vestibules at a half million. I gotta take care of my exterior, my building, because if you don't take care of the exterior, the insides start to fall apart. So I gotta reseal the windows, little over half a million. The, this is recent, the Crestview, Riverview, the doors, that whole six seventy-eight. Then the windows, the high school at two. So then that, that leaves me with roughly a little over a million left. So then, we can either do pool or we can do the high school arena. And and I, I want to say that I, I really want to do the transportation. My reasoning for going away from that is just the unfortunate fact is they're out of sight, out of mind. Um, and and I, I just, I, I think if we overlook some of this other stuff. If you, if you wouldn't have presented this stuff the way you did, you did too good. We could have probably. Missed out on some of these things, but I, for that reason, I, I have to go the way I'm thinking, so.
Mr. Carl? What are you thinking?
Mrs. Miller?
My greatest concern, I guess if I prioritized everything, it would be the safety and security of kids. Um, and that goes to everything Matt was just addressing. Um, of course, safety and security of our employees is also important. Um, I have a question on the transportation building. Since we talked about essentially rebuilding that, have we looked at going to an alternative site to do that?
That's a great question. I was thinking the same thing, even like Craigbaum Field or someplace up around here?
I've talked about a lot of things, but um, man sitting next to you kind of has to help. As far as what? I, I looked at that, I, I think we talked about two, two different locations. That was, the thing is, out of sight and out of mind isn't a bad thing when it's what it is. Um, and the way that building's oriented, you can't see a lot of what's, the ugly, you can't see. It's, it's, it's well hidden. It's off the road. You put it in Craigbaum Field, we're putting screening on the fence to hide.
It's gonna be a big, beautiful, brand new building.
Yeah, well, yeah, right.
That's right.
And how many buses? Yeah, parked out there.
But, but. I don't mind showing those off.
But Deb, your point's well taken.
It is.
Doesn't mean that we need to relocate it at the same existing site.
Right.
So if the board decides. So if the board decides, hey, um, we would really like to do that in the future, but what we want you to do is bring us options of where it could be. Um, I think that's very realistic. I think it's smart thinking actually. Just because it's there now doesn't mean, doesn't mean it has to be there in the future.
Right.
And, um, Terry and I have had zero conversations about another location with that. So, um, yes, there would be, my hesitation would be, I don't want to buy any property because then that gets away from us, but it'd be existing property that the school district already has. Okay, we can, we can give you some options with that if that's what you so choose as a board to do.
Especially if it's going to be brand-new. You know, we're not renovating a building.
Exactly. And as long as it could stay in place and be functional while that was happening, regardless of where that's happening, it seems like that would be viable. The, the other thing is, um, when we look at the library and, and what needs to be done there, my argument would be we are in a competitive environment right now. Not only doing what's best for kids and making sure that they're happy, but if they're not happy, they have the right to go somewhere else. And we have to stay competitive. We have to create an, uh, an attractive environment for kids where they learn not only to their best of their ability, but it's a nice place to live every day for nine months. And there's a lot of usability by changing that library area away from that depressing. And I do remember what that looked like when it was first done. And it was very inviting and lots of light coming in there and kids conversing. And by putting in the learning stations and the meeting areas, we're creating, as you said, Terry, the environment that kids are gonna work in when they leave us. So this is really tough, but if I were to prioritize, it'd be safety first. It would be the, we've started the high school, let's just finish it. And looking then in the future at what we can do with that bus garage area, maybe in an alternative site that we have.
Mrs. Heim? He's last. Still writing. Go ahead, Mr. Wall.
So I think I'm hearing a theme and I'm gonna call out because it's the same thing I was thinking of, it's safety and security first. So number one thing on my list is the secure vestibules. I, I can't believe we've gotten this far and taken care of it. I like Matt's comments about taking care of the buildings, so the window reseal, all that stuff, that's up there on the list too. I have a question because, and I thought about it as I was sitting here thinking about it. The horseman's HVAC, are we worried that it's, where are we, how is that? Is it, can we get a couple more years or is it something we?
Yeah, we had a couple small HVAC projects like that and none of them are detriment. They're not like Salamone was.
Okay.
And is, um, yeah, so we're okay.
And while it doesn't go with my children first, I'm really tired of hearing about Salamone's pool and I really just want to get that taken care of. It seems like the can that's been kicked around just as long as the high school. And I think we need to deal with it, but what I want is, I like Carrie's idea about trying to repurpose those locker rooms. So if we do something and where we can maybe have a little bit more room or a little bit more dollar figure to be able to improve that, I would, I like that idea. Nothing against adding another restroom, but why, why wouldn't we just reuse or renovate something that we already got there and give them something nice to work with? And I think, I, I kind of heard her say that maybe a couple of stalls would be better than just the one, uh, at a basketball game. And I haven't been to a basketball game there, which I need to, I need to fix. But that sounds like something that would be worthwhile conversation. So I might think I'll build a little bit more, um, on that. Having worked at the old transportation building, I know that the need for that to be done, but I loved Deb's comment about, does it need to be there? Because I know at one point, Mark Rikasham, HQ'd said, can we have that area? Because they had a thought of having someone close to the airport to be able to use that. So to me, that's prime ground that we should be talking with them. And we do have other ground that we could do something better with. Problem is, when I add all this up, it doesn't come, the, the figures don't come all together, that's the problem.
Yeah, that's really nice, Ryan, but you're way over six million.
Well, I know, but here's the thing. What I, what I should finish on that is, it can't be done now, it needs to go into that next batch.
Right, I'm, I'm just teasing.
I, I, you know what? I'm really intrigued by the library, but what I would also like to hear, and again, I don't know how we do this, is I would love for Dr. Deggets and some other thoughts about what all that space could be. I know we have some ideas, but I would love to hear from him and his staff what that could be. Um, I know you have some great ideas, but I would really like to hear that. I really do like the idea of a tiered space. I was, I know we got rid of it in the science area, but I liked that type of, even if it's just like two tiers or three tiers and a place that someone could do some stuff. I think back to the choir competition, if they could have a mini-stage like that, that could be used for other things, but that type of space in that area would be fun. And again, that's blowing the budget all out of what he was thinking. I don't know how we're gonna do it, but that's my thought process and I, I still think I need to run the numbers, but I, I'm with Matt. Secure vestibules and taking care of the building, the resealing's gotta be the primary things that we do. And then how we kind of figure that out, so. There, Carrie, have fun.
Mrs. Heim?
All right, so, yes, I think we're all in agreement that the vestibule, vestibules and the resealing are like top priority. I love the idea of the library. I spent so much time in the library in high school and it was just okay. But I was also, I was a nerd and I liked to read and I still like to read. So that is just kind of like a warm welcoming space that you have presented. And I think that that will encourage students even more in their learning. So I, I, those would be my top three. I like the idea of changing the pool, of taking the pool off and changing those lockers, but I think that's gonna need more time and maybe even a little bit more money than we have allotted, so.
Mr. Carl?
So I have some questions before I go any further on this, on, on the vestibules. Is that just one vestibule for each building or is there gonna be two? Because it's, uh, are they, are they like Crestview where they have doors on both sides?
It, there's door on the backside, but that's not how people enter the building. So it's at, at door one in each building. So it's the same, it's what I showed.
So it's, it's just, it'll be just one wall?
It'd be adding one wall, yeah.
That is my number one priority is the security. I'm with Matt on the building exterior next, uh, and the windows. As far as the transportation, I was looking at that and you've got ten-foot of fall from one side of that site to the other, down to the, the, the existing detention pond. Any drainage issues you have out there should be able to be easily fixed. And I'd like to.
Hey, Aaron, can you talk into your mic?
Oh, sorry.
I can't hear you.
Sorry, um, the, the, but the transportation site, um, I think a lot of that drainage could be fixed pretty easily since you have ten-foot of fall from one side to the other, down to the detention basin that's there. And I'd love to sit there and kind of kick around some ideas on different ways to be able to save money from there to be able to put it into other stuff. Would it be pretty cheap on the IT stuff to be able to just to get a ceiling in there to keep it cooler? And then update other things later?
In the library space?
Yeah.
Um, right now, the walls are the walls that only go to the ceiling. So we need the walls to go all the way to the deck and we need to isolate that space completely. So we could be done, um, but also they mounted a lot of equipment to that wall that needs to come down. So it's gonna be a little tricky about how to keep it all operating.
Right.
But we, we've done it before, so. But, yeah.
And I didn't know if, if there was a, a, a cheaper, easier way to do that because it's, you, technical equipment, you want to keep it cool. So I, I get that. I love the idea of, of the pool and keeping the locker rooms and repurposing them, even if you don't do it right away. That's a space that you could cut the floor out of and very easily replumb things and get it set up and not disturb anything that's going on. The HVAC system would be next and that's, um, and I put the libraries and the commons area last only because I think we're in a position in the school system where we're transitioning and changing a lot of things. And with the technology side and the trades and everything that we're doing, we, if we do that right now and then we find it's something else we want to add to it in the next five years or whatever, it gives us a little bit of time to kind of look towards the future and see what programs we're bringing in and what other things we can help with. So, um, that would, that's my order.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. I'm gonna just echo a lot of the same things that were said. I think the security of the buildings has to be first and foremost. We've, um, we can't take this, that chance. The, the cost is, is something we can, we can afford. Uh, I think the, the windows again, uh, here, I think are really important. I was gonna lean a little harder on horseman, but if we can wait a few years, I'm okay with that. If that was a problem, then we move, I think, right away. I, I'm having a hard time envisioning exactly what the library, uh, could turn into. And, and I guess I just wonder if the, if, as we talk about numbers and we try to get ourselves around the six million dollar number, are there ways to separate some things to make it work? Everybody here, I think, is, we're certainly sold on a couple of things, I believe, that are absolutes. And I think we don't even need to have much debate after that, but that last half of that money, I think, is something that is, I think, for us to talk about a little bit. In particular, you know, how do we spend, if we're gonna, if we do the windows and we do the vestibules, we're, you know, we're two and a half million dollars in, so we have three and a half million bucks. That's a lot of money, um, but it's, is it enough to do, to separate it out and feel pretty good about what way we spend it? I, I think that's, that's still some questions we need to figure out.
Yeah. So back of my, back of the napkin math here is we do the windows, we do the vestibule, we do horseman, we do the pool, we do the windows and we do the arena. That's five million, nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, which could give some room if we need to do a little bit more at Salamone. And if there's something else, if we think horseman, that's nine hundred and fifty million, nine hundred and fifty thousand, so it could be adjusted. But what I, I, I still think that gives us a year, because I just looked at Tyler's presentation. I don't think we have, I think we would have to start those conversations based on how he was displaying it. We'd have to start those conversations before winter of twenty-six. I think we'd have to do something in winter of twenty-six. So that gives us two big-ticket items to start having conversations about. And I think it gives time to talk about the media center and come up with some ideas and then really get the staff and, and, and I, I want the kids to be involved in that too. You know, let's, let's see if we can improve that. And maybe we don't take the full six. We maybe get what we need and we get some better numbers. But again, I, I know some of that stuff is ballpark, you said too, so maybe we do need the full six.
Right.
And do that.
I would just add that, you know, I've been on the board for a bit, Matt and I have, and the, the cost of the demolition of the pool is about four times what it was the first time we heard about it, uh, six, six years ago.
And that's why I want it done.
And it scares me to death to think we're gonna wait, um, even though it's not even close to being close to the top of my list. But I just, I fear for the, the cost of that thing not getting cheaper. I mean, we could sell like just swings of a sledgehammer or something like that, you know? Something, I'm thinking outside the box.
So.
I'd take a swing.
In that, maintaining the buildings, is there any like caulking up here that we knew at this building or any of the other buildings that we needed to think of? I know that we could maybe also include in that if we're truly thinking about.
Yeah, there, there are more buildings that, uh, can use it, those are the worst.
Okay.
Rich told me which ones are worse at this point. And Crestview also has some site drainage issues that need to be dealt with, the way the water runs off the building. So there's other things that we can help.
Could have as optionals if we, if we find some savings and stuff, okay.
Okay, we're gonna see how well I listened, okay? So we're gonna work right off of Terry's chart here, okay? And so Cindy, between you and Terry, I'm trusting you to take fabulous notes here.
Or go back and watch the recording.
Okay, all right. When I listen to this conversation and I hear everything that you're talking about, you know what my definition of compromise is? Is getting eighty-five percent of what you want and fifteen percent of what you can live with, okay? So the challenge is, take that home tonight and see if that works, okay? So, it doesn't, okay. So the number one issue here is the second bullet point under option C, which is secure entry vestibules. That was consistent throughout the whole conversation. So we start, we start there, okay? If I am, if I'm kind of pooling all of your conversations together, then I slide up to option B and I do the high school window replacement. That's two. And I'm kind of looking around the table, hoping I'm not offending anybody, but in general terms, this is what we're gonna be talking about here. Thirdly then, what I, what I'm hearing you, um, say to me, which I have just as, a, a little confusion here, but I think I understand, um, this. This is where I believe the Salamone pool demolition has some real teeth to it here as a group because you're saying to me, all that's happening is the escalation of price. Now this is all just what I'm hearing. And then what I'm also hearing then is, is that we move down to the resealing, the windows, the doors, the triplets, the caulk, uh, control joints, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I hear that all clump together. And then, then, if Terry's magical and can do his, do his trick, do we have enough left at that point in time, um, to do the arena ceiling paint? Okay, I'm just, I'm just talking in broad strokes here. Then what we would do sooner than later is we would begin the discussions on the high school library and the transportation building, like pretty quick, into the fall. And then we would jump that relatively pretty quick. Am I in general terms? Because we're, we all want, we, basically Terry's done a brilliant job. We want to do this, right? This is what we want to do. Now it's just a timing and order piece. And I think what we want is time to talk about that learning commons and we want some time to really, I think Deb, your point's just really well taken. Yeah, we need to do it, but we need to do it there. You know, I think this would give us time to flesh out those two major projects when we look at the next series of things we want to do. So I know a couple of people want to talk, so Deb, you've been patiently waiting and we'll go to Ryan. I, I just want to make sure I'm hearing all of you.
I agree with everything, that the thing I struggle with a little bit is the pool at Salamone because there's no educational value there. That's the only thing and that's the reason nothing's been done so far, right? And that's why the can's been kicked down the road, but I do struggle with that. I somehow prefer, not that we don't need to do it, but I would prefer that we take areas that we're currently using.
Okay.
And we need to maintain a level of performance for.
Yeah, because the way we can write this at the hearing, we can allow ourselves that flexibility, if you hear what I'm saying. I, tonight, walking in, I didn't know if you were gonna tell me learning commons and transportation in and of itself, okay, then we're, we're basically done. But now as we're preparing the legal documents, we still have some room in there to make some adjustments. But I, I, I more need, I'm more concerned tonight about, okay, you're pointing me a direction. You're kind of pointing me this way, okay? And John, we'd love to do, we'd love to do these two major pieces, but not right now. I mean, that's really what you're, what you're, we want time to plan, we want time to get Russ and his staff involved, we want time to think about other locations. Then when we're working with Ice Miller and those other things on these, on this bond, you've given me enough direction this evening that Terry and I can have these discussions and start figuring some of this out. can have these discussions and start figuring some of this out. I agree with you. Um, I wish the pool was done. But what's, I can't remember the cost. What'd you estimate the cost being for the pool?
It's nine hundred and something.
It's not gonna get any cheaper. It's just gonna, it's gonna keep going up, and, and that's what's tough about being on the board, because that price is just gonna continue to go up in, in, in cost. But am I, I hope I'm hearing you all correctly, and I'm kinda got my arms around general directions that you wanna go.
So the only thing I was gonna say is, I think there's still room to do Horseman, 'cause I think you're about a million light if, with that list, if you add Horseman in there. And then how I would reorder it is I probably would put Salamone last, even though I want it done. I think that's the last one that we do after we get everything, after we get all the other ones done.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, would you guys agree with what Ryan just said? What, I'm saying heads nod, Matt?
Yeah, say it again.
So, I think, how, you know, all of that list, I'd add Horseman to it, but I would put Salamone at the end, and then if none of the. HVAC, that'd probably be the second to last.
Okay.
Because we don't really need it, but I, I think we, we can squeeze it in in this one and, and help them out. But those are probably the last two. Secure vegetables, number one. Everything else in the middle's kinda fuzzy. But I think in the grand scheme of things, that's the list. We work through that, let's do, let's do Horseman if we can, and then if we still have the funds, we do that. Unless he comes to us and say, oh, well, we could add some more maintenance of a building to improve that. But that's, that would be my challenge. But I think we could write the legal document in such a way that would give us that flexibility to be able to do that.
Okay, so I think we're all in agreement that in the, in the order, when Terry and I are working through this, the order of that list, I'm just looking at, at faces here that Salamone would be the bottom of the list with Horseman above that. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, right.
And that's kinda what I'm hearing everybody say, okay?
The, the other thing, too, to consider is if we decide to take off removing the restrooms off of that, it's also gonna reduce the price of the demolition, if, if it's only the pool area.
Right. You know, and, and I'm not, I'm not so much against it because I think I'm, I'm in total agreement with you, Aaron. It would give us time to, like, the extra work we wanna do with the learning commons and the transportation building. Quite frankly, that extra time figuring out Salamone would, would be a plus for us. I mean, it really would be, and I think, Aaron, your point's really well-taken, is that that would give us time to sort through what we really wanna do down there, 'cause it's more than just pulling off the pool. I mean, it, it really is. We, and we need some time to work through some of that. Okay, what have I missed? As you all know, you can call me at any point in time, but what this gives, I think, Terry, are you comfortable with the direction that they're pointing us?
No, absolutely, yeah, we're, um.
Is anything close to what you thought we would say?
No.
That's a great.
But I did such an excellent job presenting the little ones that, uh, yeah. But I, I agree with you, that the most important thing to the students. And if we knock the small stuff off, then we can go into the next bond really with some showcase projects.
And I really like the idea of doing some, you know, in-depth study with the staff and getting their opinion, getting the students' opinion, doing some research in that, in that avenue to make it the best space that we want.
Yeah, we've gotta get it right.
Yeah.
And some field trips.
Yes.
And go see some existing spaces and, right.
There are two gentlemen sitting at the table who have been incredibly quiet for an hour and a half, uh, whose opinion I value at a very high level and trust. Chuck, in two minutes, what do you think? What do you hear?
Number one, I'm so proud when I hear in-depth conversation from our board and, and our leaders here and of actual deep thought of what's best for the kids on the money that we have, what's best for our school. And Huntington should never take that for granted. This board is to be complimented and over and over again on your passion for how do we do the most for our kids with the money we have? And it's well-thought-out, so, uh, I would add that, uh, many of your thoughts, in my opinion, I always think safety, and then I think the most number of children that can benefit is every decision I've ever made's on those two things, safety, and then how many kids can benefit with the money we have. I would add that in the future, I would add a couple of other areas for your consideration, Board. I believe the fine arts area of the high school needs a facelift and needs attention for the second portion in the future. Uh, they do such a wonderful job, and, uh, if you've been to some other new ones, Terry, I know you do, they could use our, our thoughts on those as well. I'm gonna also say one up Aaron's alley, that, uh, with the addition of, uh, our wrestling program and girls' wrestling, and, uh, with growing numbers, uh, in the fifties of our, our men's wrestling program, that space needs to be looked at for proper space for those kids as well in the future. Uh, appreciate your, your thoughts today. I couldn't agree with more with, um, ninety-nine percent of what was said today, so thank you.
Jay?
You know, we're about every student, every day. Um, and so again, I, I agree, the whole safety piece is so vital to our schools, uh, today. And so securing those vestibules, um, I like the idea of that renovation, that learning commons in the high school here. Uh, that's, that intrigues me, uh, because again, as, as you've all has said and Chuck has said, you know, it's about our kids, uh, doing what's best for them, keeping them first and foremost. So I mean, I'm intrigued by what that would look like in that space as I saw those pictures. So, um, if I had my top two, those would be, those would be mine.
Mrs. Gray, do you have enough opinion, or do you want that?
Sure, yeah. Um, I, I always think safety first, too. I think that's the most important thing. Um, I, I love the windows at the high school. I'll be real honest about that. I love the natural light that comes in there, and I'm always a fan of keeping windows, but keeping them safe and secure certainly is a high priority. Um, and then I, I know I've been here with the board for a long time, and I've seen the, the cost of the demolition of the Salamone pool, and it does just continue to increase every time you get a quote, so that's always out there. But, um, yeah, I support, uh, what everyone is talking about, same thing.
So I think we have a, a path. I think we have a direction. We can't vote on anything tonight because that's not the essence of a work session, but I really, truly appreciate the dialogue and the conversation that we had. I can't wait to speak to all of you privately, individually, and tell you I had my list made out before we came in here. And, um, it'll be a fascinating conversation to have with you, um, about that. But I think you're absolutely making the right decisions about pointing us down this direction. And so I, I appreciate that, and I'm grateful for all that. Tim, you got the last word.
Uh, thank you, Terry, for all your work, my goodness. Didn't make our, our decisions any easier, but probably made them harder. Uh, but it's so important that we have good information and can't ask for more. Pam, thank you back there for helping us out tonight. Good stuff. And we have HPD, thank you so much for helping us out, too.
Can I say one more thing?
It's all you.
Okay, we did not get to the second agenda item, and so we'll push that down the road, okay? Um, I'm not quite sure when, because we have some important business coming up, but we will get to that and have a, have a, an open discussion, okay, about that, about that process, too. So that's not so time-sensitive right now, but yet it's, it's very important that we have that, that discussion along the way. Terry, you're amazing. Um, you're the best that I've worked with. I've done this a long time. You do incredible work, um, and we're grateful for you, and I mean that outstanding. So we just need to adjourn there, then.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I didn't think we could vote, but I'll make it.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Anybody could second this?